Dismissive of the working harbor's contribution to the economic prosperity of the city, state, and region. Its discouraging of investment in the working harbor, and its disrespectful to many low-barrier-to-entry, living-wage workers who are too busy doing their jobs and supporting their families to demonstrate and testify or to mount an email or social media campaign. The EOA cargo forecast matters. Among other things, it establishes a foundation in the comprehensive plan for attracting investment in the working harbor to support and help achieve many of the aspirations and goals included in the plan. A low cargo forecast is wholly inconsistent with every other high-aiming aspect of the city's plan. It's factually incorrect, technically flawed, and just plain wrong. Unless the city is intentionally trying to send a message that Portland's no longer interested in heavy industry, traded sector activities, and jobs for people who, as a friend describes it, "shower after work rather than before work," the council should send the EOA and low cargo forecast back to PSC and BPS for appropriate, objective corrective action, meaning that the original medium forecast should be reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today, Madam President and Commissioners. My name is Leigh McElvein. I am here on behalf of Oregon Tradeswomen, where I'm employed as a workforce project manager. I want to speak with you about the low-growth forecast for the Portland Harbor in the draft comprehensive plan and what that means to our students and to the communities that we serve. For those of you that aren't familiar with the work of Oregon Tradeswomen, we are a small nonprofit organization that recruits and trains approximately 100 low-income, diverse women annually. We reach out to women in marginalized communities of Portland, women who cannot afford a college education, single mothers that need jobs that provide family-supporting wages, and women re-entering the workforce after economic displacement or incarceration. Graduates of our trades and manufacturing programs learn job skills such as carpentry and welding and receive job placement assistance. Many of our women have gone to work in high-skill, high-wage careers with Portland Harbor businesses such as Gunderson and Vigor. And according to recent census data, 20% of the harbor's workforce comes from communities of color in Portland. At present, 22% of our graduating women have been able to lift themselves out of poverty through jobs in the Portland Harbor. For example, before Catherine came to Oregon Tradeswomen, she was making minimum wage at a car rental agency, earning less than $19,000 per year. In her career with Gunderson, she is currently earning $19 an hour doing skilled and meaningful work, first as a welder and now as a crane operator. For our graduates, low-income residents and people of color who rely on these jobs, the Portland Harbor is a pathway out of poverty. Residents like Catherine need employment alternatives to low-wage, low-skills service-sector jobs. Industrial manufacturing and trades careers provide exactly the kind of middle-class economic opportunities that we are all working to support through a range of other policy priorities, and our land use plan should be no exception to that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Was John Gibbon? And we'll go with number five, Alan Spratt. And that's all who signed up for item 1263.
If anybody else wants to speak on 1263 only, please come on up.
My name is John Gibbon, and I am here tonight to support the adoption of the Recommended Citywide Systems Plan and specifically to speak on the stormwater projects included in the Citywide Systems Plan. I unfortunately missed the Halloween flood. I was out elk hunting, and I think that that event made it obvious that the stormwater improvements proposed and to be produced by the Citywide System Plan, specifically the maintenance and reliability improvements, as well as the pumping and plant system improvements, are necessary to accommodate the growth we have in the city right now and in the future. Specifically for southwest Portland, I have to say that if we don't implement the plan, we won't even be handling the stormwater, let alone managing it. We do not have a stormwater system in southwest Portland right now, and the proposals that we have in the Citywide Systems Plan, the INI program and the watershed improvement project plans, really will only get us to maybe management, and I'm not sure that there'll be a system even then. Important projects that were not mentioned in the Citywide Systems Plan that the city has undertaken since also need to be implemented, specifically the Stevens Creek Plan and Stevens Tryon Street-by-Street Plan, they are simply necessary to remedy numerous community deficiencies. 20 to 25% of our streets and properties lack approvable discharge points, and they are absolutely essential to make whatever density the council chooses and finds feasible in this area, make it possible to have that kind of density. It will not be sustainable without such implementation. Thank you.
My name is Alan Spratt. I'm with the Working Waterfront Coalition and Vigor Industrial. We have the shipyard on Swan Island. I'm speaking to the low cargo forecast. We feel that it's just way too pessimistic for use in the planning documents, and relying only on or planning only for growth and automobile imports over the next few decades is just really unrealistic and undercuts the potential of the harbor. I think it's unfortunate that the planning is happening in a time when the port is having trouble with T6 because I think that that biases some of the thinking about the opportunities in the future. But I would just point out that the shipyard in the early 1990s where I worked was a ghost town and near closure. And thanks to the strategic planning and execution of that plan by the Port of Portland, two decades later, it is now a thriving facility. An Oregon company based in Portland with 10 facilities now in three states, employing a couple of thousand people at middle and high-income jobs. We have many welders that are making over $100,000 a year at our facility. So there's tremendous opportunity ahead for the Portland Harbor, and we just really need to plan for it. There are many emerging opportunities in both global trade and shipping that Oregon is well-positioned to take advantage of, and we need to be prepared for those opportunities. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Joe Esman. I'm representing 4,400 members of the IBW Local 48 here in Portland, Oregon, southwest Washington, who -- and we've met before. I'm just speaking for working people who need places to go. You have CTE programs, trade schools, you have Swan Island, they got a welding place. Not everybody's going to go to college, okay? These are good jobs, and by restricting this, another signal from the city of Portland says, "We're open for business, but only certain kinds of business." It's okay to work with your hands. It's okay to manufacture things. That is what says on the side of the city cars and trucks, the city that works. So I think you should go back and look at some of your information here and your forecasting. This is the last big city on the West Coast. We have opportunities to have more manufacturing here, more growth, and a future, a career for some of these young people. I started out in the trades. I managed to support a wife and two children with health insurance and benefits. Thank you for your time.
Good evening. My name's Leigh Stevenson. I'm a small-business owner. I have a landscape company. Majority of our work's in the Portland Harbor area. We're concerned with the low-growth forecast. We do work for people like Far West Steel, International Paper, Evera's, Oregon Metal Slitters, Peterson Cat, Haney Trucking, Poen LLC, Tar Fuel Distribution, and Rivergate LLC. And it's been a viable job for our company. We do about $2 million a year and would like to continue and appreciate your consideration in that direction. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Now we'll move to the sign-in sheet for the other item.
Item 1264, the first four people, number one, two, three, and four, are Glenn Bridger, Donna Bestwick, Bethany Imhoff, and Sherman Yazlada. Sorry.
Mr. Bridger, welcome. Please start.
I am here speaking on behalf of the Public Involvement Advisory Council for the city. I want to focus my comments on Chapter 2. I strongly support, we strongly support, the wording changes that have been made in Chapter 2 and think it does a very good job on setting forth a good community involvement process. There are a couple fine-tuning items in there that I would like to see refined. First, when we talk about the coverage of the comprehensive plan, there are several different phrases that are used at different locations. Planning investment decisions is the most commonly-used phrase, but there are other references that talk about land use decisions and use other variations on the wording. We need to be consistent in the wording that we use so that people don't make unwarranted assumptions on the variations in what is covered in this document. We need to cover in community involvement exactly what is covered in the comprehensive plan, no more and no less. The second item I wanted to address is, we requested that a statement be included in here that adequate funding be included in the programs for all community involvement activities. This is a requirement of state law, and we wanted the provision in state law repeated in this document. Now, I understand and respect that such a direction can possibly be used against the city in litigation or may be considered as overriding council's requirement to meet decisions, but it is in state law, and so repeating what is in state law cannot do either one of these things because state law already will prevail in any of these decisions, whether it's included in the comprehensive plan or not. Including it in the comprehensive plan better informs the administrators and the managers of their responsibility to adequately manage their resources in public involvement so that they do proper public involvement.
Thank you. Could you please email us the state law that you're referencing?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, I'm Donna Bestwick, and I've loved Multnomah Village for 30 years. The village has grown and changed over time, but I'm afraid that your comprehensive plan recommendations will irrevocably ruin the village. Our village cannot accommodate a center designation with 45-foot buildings and the accompanying traffic congestion and lack of parking. We are here to head off the problems being experienced on Division and other parts of town. Division is a bleak canyon with horrendous parking, constant traffic congestion, and their residents are stuck. There's no going back. In a year-long survey, the residents of that area expressed their discontent with parking, traffic congestion, lack of affordable housing, and boxy, modern buildings that seem to rise up from the street. We can't allow that to happen in the village. Your parking policies are unattainable and preposterous. Zero parking spaces for a 30-unit, .2 parking spaces for 31 to 40, and .25 for 41 to 50. Even San Francisco requires one parking space per one-bedroom unit and parking spaces for guests. Steve Dotterer lives in the southeast neighborhood and is retired from the City of Portland Transportation and Planning Bureau. He says the city's transportation strategy has been built around the approach of not accommodating cars since the '70s. Seriously, any project, any science experiment that hasn't worked in 45 years should be scrapped. When a concert hall or a restaurant is full, the fire marshal doesn't allow any more people in because of the comfort and safety of those who are already there. We have to find a way to allow people to live here while also welcoming those who want to come here, and that means that some may not be able to move here until housing is available. That's not a bad thing. We can do that. Judge Judy wrote a book some years ago, "Stop Peeing on My Leg and Telling Me It's Raining." The parking doesn't work, people. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bethany Imhoff. I'm here to testify about the temporary shelter at this year's Armory. First read about it in the Portland Mercury at the end of September.
I'm going to have to interrupt you because that's not part of this project. It's not zoned for anything other than the temporary use. But you're welcome to send in some comments about that, otherwise. Thank you.
My name is Sheremene Yazhileda, and my family and I moved to Multnomah Village last December. I also recently graduated from the University of Oregon's Architecture Program. I'm also concerned about the neighborhood center and CM2 designation proposed for Multnomah Village. I'm concerned that this will encourage the small shops and historic buildings along Capitol Highway to be demolished to make room for the larger developments, and I'm also concerned that it will dwarf the street. Capitol Highway is a narrow, two-lane street along the village, and I'm concerned about losing the light and views that we currently enjoy in this walkable neighborhood. I would support a neighborhood corridor and CM1 classification to encourage an in-between level of development that is in keeping with the scale of the street and neighboring buildings. These would include townhouses and rowhouses, three-story apartments and condos with ground-floor retail, pocket neighborhood development with duplexes, small, single-family homes, and walk-ups on smaller lots with a network of open spaces and buildings oriented to the street. I think we can accommodate a population increase in a contextually sensitive manner, and I would point to the Stevens Creek Crossing complex as a great example of affordable housing density and community that contributes positively to the neighborhood. Thank you.
So Olivia and Bethany, thank you for giving us your testimony and writing. That's very helpful.
The next four are number five, six, seven, and eight, Daniel Perowski, Jean-Claude Perris, Catherine Christensen, and Simeon Hyde.
Would you like to go first?
Is that on? Okay. My name is Daniel Perowski. I live at 2173 Northeast Multnomah Street, and I speak for 94 residents of Sullivan's Gulch who have endorsed my written testimony, which concerns one specific proposal affecting an area on the south side of Northeast Multnomah Street from 19th to 21st avenues within the Sullivan's Gulch neighborhood. Please review my written testimony for details I cannot present now, especially how the planning process arrived at this proposal without any clear rationale other than comments made by unnamed stakeholders cited in the North Northeast Quadrant Plan. I oppose this proposal to change the land use designation for this area to mixed-use urban center with proposed zoning as commercial mixed-use Level 3. I urge you to retain the current designation as high-density multi-dwelling and current zoning as high-density residential. I oppose mixed use in this area, especially at the large-scale, intense level of CM3 zoning, but support high-density residential use. First, this area has no current commercial properties. The nearest commercial property is the Marriott Residence Inn, which blends nicely into the residential character of the neighborhood. Second, this area is not part of any civic corridor and does not satisfy MAX or bus-service criteria for this designation. Third, Sullivan's Gulch is a residential neighborhood blessed with close-walking access, five to 12 blocks at most, to commercial areas on all sides. We don't need access to commercial activity within our neighborhood. Fourth, traffic and parking issues have already increased significantly, so commercial activity will only create additional pressure along Multnomah, a local service street, and 21st Avenue, a neighborhood collector's street with critical access south over the Banfield Freeway. Fifth, there is already an elegant transition from the commercial Lloyd District through the Residence Inn into this residential area. Allowing CM3 zoning would create a step up, not a step down, for building heights, mass, and intensity of use. Based on these facts, applying the mixed-use concept to this area is inappropriate, unnecessary, and potentially harmful of livability in Sullivan's Gulch. I urge you to not allow commercial development outside existing civic corridors or within existing residential neighborhoods, as stated in the plan objectives.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, Commissioners, my name is Jean-Claude Perris. I recommend that the draft comp plan goals and policies document be edited for clarity. It is a rambling document that is difficult to interpret. The language is often poetic and lacks specifics. The ambiguous wording leaves it open to vague interpretation. Unlike the current comp plan, the recommended draft first lists all the chapter's goals and then all the policies grouped together. I recommend that each policy be listed under the goal that it best addresses. This is the format of the current comp plan, and it provides context for the policies. This would add clarity. I also recommend that excess verbiage be removed from the goals and policies. The document is too important. Its meaning should be clear. This could be accomplished by removing ambiguous language and by either defining or removing undefined terms. It may be necessary to hire an independent editor for this task. I find the most troubling example of ambiguous language in Chapter 2. At first glance, the concepts appear noble and appear to be providing the rights and protection written in the U.S. Constitution, but the devil is in the details. For example, I'm concerned about the use of the term "partner," which is used extensively and not defined in the glossary. I recommend that the following policy be inserted at the end of the first section of Chapter 2, Partners in Decision-Making. Suggested new policy, transparent partnerships. Maintain and publicize the list of partners who are included in planning and investment decisions. For each process, include the selection process for including the partners in the list, their contact information, who and who and how many people each partner represents, how the partner's positions are determined, and financial interests or conflict of interest the partner has, and how the partner's spokespeople are chosen. I advise the city council to make sure that a lawyer reviews Chapter 2 so that it does not have unintended consequences. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Catherine Christensen, and I live in the Multnomah neighborhood. Recently, I was fortunate to bike through France and Spain. With over 20 days of riding, I never was threatened by a vehicle. Combining mass transportation with riding allowed us to reach any destination. Here in Portland, I cannot ride for one day without feeling scared. In many cases, this doesn't even involve an angry or impatient driver, but situations where we are thrown in each other's paths and unprotected bike riders are at severe risk. The plan and its codes are treating all neighborhoods alike. Yes, in Multnomah, we could eventually be a southwest pearl, but had you increased density without stomping on the people that already live here? To successfully increase density, we must get people out of their cars and on buses, bikes, and walking. You can't build enough roads and parking spaces. This isn't sustainable. Bus service in Multnomah is not adequate to get people out of their cars. There is some service to downtown Portland, but Multnomah is closer to Beaverton, Tigard, and Tuallaton, but it takes over an hour to reach these destinations, and our roads cannot support more traffic. As I mentioned, biking is frightening. Next challenges is service. Our closest grocery store is over a mile away, too far to walk with bags of groceries, and there are few jobs in Multnomah, so most residents commute to work. At least initially, people will move here, and the town might be able to absorb the first development, but what happens when there are five? There won't be parking for local businesses or existing families. Long-range planners would say this is a normal part of growth and that people will give up their cars. Eventually, this may be true, but remember the people we don't want to stomp on until we get there. Just recently, my apartment-dwelling neighbor who lives two blocks away asked if his daughter could park in front of my house. He has four cars parked in our area, one in his allotted spot. With our narrow streets and often unpaved streets, many cars are parked in the streets. There must be solutions to these serious infrastructure problems before the comp plan can be approved. Thank you.
My name is Simeon Hyde. I own and live in a home in Multnomah Village. I have heard the term "livable neighborhoods." What does this mean? Livable neighborhoods are characterized by human-scale design. Residents can walk, bike, or take public transportation to shops, services, and cultural resources. Even walking to a bus stop and then walking when the destination has been reached encourages physical activity. Walking and biking result in reduced traffic and better health. Livable neighborhoods are mixed-use in nature. Small parks or outdoor seating areas along with wide sidewalks encourage residents and store customers to linger. Sidewalk cafes and restaurants add to this desire to stop and enjoy the day. Portland's North Mississippi Avenue Business District does a good job of inviting residents and visitors to more fully enjoy their experience. Coffee shops and restaurants provide seating and service and extra wide sidewalks and courgettes. However, at the top of the hill on Mississippi Avenue, city planning appears to have gone awry. One five-story and one four-story apartment building have been built immediately adjacent and south of existing bungalow homes. Natural light at all times of year has been blocked. Views and sightlines have been destroyed. Apartment dwellers peer down on bungalow owners as they work in their backyards. The livability and privacy of these homes has been destroyed. Multnomah Village's neighborhoods are mostly low-density, while new developments are high-density, which leads to a conflict when they are sited next to low-density areas. Privacy, solar orientation, and access along with views are seriously compromised. Portland's southwest Barbara Boulevard appears to be the next transportation corridor to be developed. This will be a major rebuilding project to provide high-capacity transit. Many people have begun to think that since Barbara Boulevard would be a major construction project, why not develop both sides of this new corridor into a high-density neighborhood? Many of the buildings south of Fred Meyer and Barbara are old, single-level structures, which is not good use for such valuable real estate. Might this area be a better choice for meeting the high-density needs of Portland? In conclusion, Multnomah Village has a neighborhood identity. Residents have a sense of place. It should be mandated that new buildings blend with the existing architectural styles and size and contribute not to detract from neighborhood livability. As a takeaway, I want to share six photos.
Actually, I'm sorry, we're done. You already had quite some -- do you have some more photographs to show up on? You were going to display them?
No, they were going to be on the screen.
If you're still here at the end and there's time, we'd be happy to look at them then, but we need to let other people have a turn at this point. Thank you.
The next four are nine, 10, 11, and 12. Michael Millenicki, Jeff Cole, Charles Richard, and James Peterson.
Madam President, City Council members, my name is Michael Malucci. I have lived in Multnomah Village all my life. I have seen the village evolve from a small town connected to Portland to now a vibrant place where there is a balance between neighbor livability and business activities. Presently, I believe the village is at a tipping point and currently under siege, pardon the cliche, by developers hoping to capitalize on the vibrancy of the village without any concern about the character of the village and the livability of the neighborhood. I'm not going to repeat some of the things that have been previously said because I had them in my statement, but what I have seen is, or I have heard, that three four-story buildings are being considered in the village. In the near future, anyone walking and driving through the village could experience the feeling of being in a canyon or a tunnel with multiple four-stories buildings towering over them and towering over the 1950 architecture of the village. Multiply this effect with significant parking problems. The core of Multnomah Village consists of two blocks of amazing 1950 to 40 architecture. Buildings on Capitol Highway, which is one lane and one way. There is gridlock every day, cars, trucks, and businesses trying to drive through the village. With narrow street, there are 35 four-parking spots in the immediate village and approximately 140 parking spots. Policies need to be created which promote an outcome that mandate developers to create housing which is in the context of the neighborhood, promote affordable housing, and moderate the density which does not degrade the livability of the neighborhood. Other metropolitan areas within the Other metropolitan areas within the country have addressed this. Smart people can do it. The city has smart people. Look at the Bay Area, Mill City, and Fairfax, California. Thank you so much.
Hello again, I'm Jeff Cole. Down the road is Multnomah Village. And though I live east of the river in Sunnyside, our two neighborhoods share a common thread. Both were developed based on street car access. Over the decades, our districts have evolved with distinct attributes, each one creating its own sense of place. Today, I urge the council to consider that mixed-use zoning on Hawthorne Boulevard may diminish that sense of place. Once, Hawthorne was mostly Zone C2, Commercial 2, with a three-story limit and a maximum 3:1 Florida-area ratio. Residential projects in the C2 zone had to comply with A1 or later R1 zoning regulations. In 1991, the CS zone replaced C2 and eliminated the three-story limit and also the FAR maximum for residential. For Comp Plan 35, most CS Hawthorne zoning may be replaced by CM2, mixed-use, and a five-story limit with bonuses. I urge the council to reverse this trend and reinstate the three-story limit with a primary focus on commercial and Hawthorne Seminole Retail District. And let me explain why. The mixed-use typology, when applied to historic properties with constricted lots, typically only 100 feet deep, like Hawthorne Belmont Division, can only produce marginal commercial space because so much ground floor space is consumed, providing access and mechanicals to the upper residential spaces. This results in expensive ground floor retail configurations with poor layouts, ill-suited for a wide range of commercial activities. By contrast, the traditional commercial storefront is essentially a warehouse storefront with massive street-side glazing. The resulting interior clear-span space is wide-open, flexible, and efficient. If you look at the businesses on Hawthorne, like Red Light Clothing Exchange, Powell's Books on Hawthorne, Artichoke Music, House of Vintage, Echo Theater, Gold Door Jewelry, One with Heart, Muse Art and Design, they all benefit from this clear-span design. Like farmland, this collection of vintage and newer storefront commercial on Hawthorne Boulevard represents its own infrastructure that works collectively. Again, I urge the council to restore the three-story limit on Hawthorne Boulevard. Thank you.
Madam Chairman, members of the council. My name is Charles Richard. One of the main reasons my wife and I bought our house on Southwest Pendleton Street four years ago was because it is located within walking distance of Multnomah Village. As a former grape grower and winemaker in Northern California, I served for nearly 20 years as an active member on the board of the Dry Creek Valley Association, which was dedicated to the protection and preservation of agriculture, often confronting developers who wanted to replace grapevines on prime soils with houses. The tragic mishandling of land use in California that I witnessed, I now see happening here in Portland. A land use policy regarding Multnomah Village must include consideration of the history of the village within the city, it's called, which dates back to 1850. The book in my hand, Portland's Multnomah Village by Nancy Hamilton, provides an accurate and very interesting story of Multnomah Village's past. Our city planners need to pass decisions on accommodating growth with higher awareness of the need to preserve the character and assets of neighborhoods and public green spaces while requiring developers to include adequate onset parking for multiple dwelling buildings. You've heard that before, I'm sure. Buildings out of scale with an existing neighborhood, especially an historically significant one, like Multnomah Village, should not be allowed. It is critically important that the neighborhood corridor designation for Multnomah Village be retained. If rampant growth is permitted to continue without consideration of keeping our neighborhoods intact, the very things that make Portland a highly desirable place to live will be destroyed. Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Peterson. The Multnomah Neighborhood Association put forward a truth-in-zoning ordinance, or truth-in-zoning proposal, to protect the single-family houses. Eighty or ninety percent of the growth is projected in the current plan to occur in mixed-use zones. When the Southwest Community Plan -- The Southwest Community Plan was the first last community plan to be developed. And after that, the City of Portland changed the development code to achieve infill. The minimum lot size in the zoning code was reduced for each of the base zones. For example, in R5, the minimum lot size was reduced to 3,000 square feet. Corner lots were first changed to duplex lots and later allowed to be divided if the square footage was less than 100 square feet into R25. This worked for a few years, but now demolitions are at record levels and the character of neighborhoods are changing. And what people value about Portland is now being destroyed. Over 150 requests for this change have been submitted already, more soon to come, for this truth-in-zoning proposal to be incorporated in the 2035 comprehensive plan. It will remove the exemption that allows for land divisions to be less than the base zone. With the adoption of the comprehensive plan, the zoning code would then need to be amended to comply. If this language remains, lot sizes and land divisions would be based upon the minimum lot size in the zoning code. The base zone in the comprehensive plan would then be meaningless. The comprehensive plan is intended to be the governing document, but the proposed language, the lot size, would be governed by the zoning code, which is inconsistent, was what the comprehensive plan is supposed to do. The other thing I'd like to address, I'd like these boxes be put into a database so that they can be viewed and put to a desired policy that they were intended, so that you can review those. Thank you very much.
The next four are 13, 14, 15, and 16. Carol McCarthy, Robert F. Gallagher, Leonard Wagner, and Sam Noble.
Can you hear me? Hello, my name is Carol McCarthy. It is my understanding that Oregon municipalities are required by OAR 660-015 to have comprehensive plans and that citizen involvement is the statute's goal number one. The current comp plan reflects this with a chapter entitled Citizen Involvement. I recommend that everyone read it. I was surprised when I discovered that the draft comp plan didn't contain the word citizen, so I testified at the first hearing to bring this omission to the attention of the PSC. I was perplexed when I searched the recommended draft and again couldn't find citizen in its goals and policies. Friends told me that the concept of citizen is very 1970s and that it now has some negative connotations. They said that community is the preferred vernacular for the 2015-2035 timeframe and that Chapter Two of the recommended draft is entitled Community Involvement for that reason. They suggested that public involvement might also be acceptable. I recommend that you either incorporate Chapter Nine, Citizen Involvement, of the current comp plan into the recommended draft or that you rename Chapter Two Public Involvement. There are logical inconsistencies that result from calling the chapter Community Involvement since it is used as the name of an entity that contains itself. For example, use of the word community in the title of Goal 2A, as well as in the enumerated list, make one wonder if the other listed items, individuals, neighborhoods, et cetera, have the same standing as communities. I think that it could be improved as follows, as shown in the box, basically by replacing the word community with public. In short, I recommend that you edit Chapter Two and replace the word community with public whenever possible. Thank you.
Hello, Madam President and City Council Members. My name is Bob Gallagher and I'm here tonight representing my sister and I, owners of Commercial Refrigeration. We are located very close to the intersection of Northeast 60th and Gleason. This is a family-owned business which my father started in 1949. We have occupied this current location for over 30 years. Commercial Refrigeration property is a single-tax lot with a Gleason side and a Flanders side. The map shows the Gleason side zone commercial and the Flanders side zone residential. We are here to request that the entire site be converted to a commercial zone. The owner of the cornered property on 60th and Gleason is also in favor of a commercial zone. The North Tabor Neighborhood Association agrees that this should all be a commercial area. They are enthusiastic about this approach as it will support the current and long-term vision and goals for this area. Thank you.
Does your lot have an actual address?
Yeah, 5920 Northeast Gleason.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, thank you.
Good afternoon or good evening. My name is Len Wagener. Issues are condemnation, de facto condemnation, eminent domain, and a request for administrative action. I represent a property at 2244 Northwest Overton, adjacent to Legacy Good Samaritan Hospital. The property is a 6,000-foot lot with a FAR factor of 4:1. The property has currently an 8,000-foot two-level apartment building on it. Under the current code, the RH zone, the property could be improved to 24,000 square feet, which is the 4:1 factor. The issue here is that if the CI zone, which follows the campus institutional, is implied, then there'll be no ability for the owner of the property to do anything with it other than operate it as a grandfathered two-level apartment. This political process really basically is condemnation. The condemnation factor, as we understand it with the elements of the eminent domain, is that the power of eminent domain, from the U.S. Constitution, the Fifth Amendment, must prove four elements in the Fifth Amendment. One, private property, which this is, and the process of taking, must be taken. Two, for public use. Three, and with just compensation. Number one, obviously it's private property, must be taken. The clarification of taken in the Constitution is as the taking of property by reducing its value. Number three, for public use. Legacy is not a public corporation. Legacy is a privately-owned property. And four, with just compensation. So the issue I have at hand behalf of my client is we need to be extracted from the comp plan change and from the eventual zone change by this body so that the RH zoning factor and the RH zoning and the 4:1 factor stay alive. So his property isn't condemned. Otherwise, we wind up in a legal battle.
Thank you. It could be it's an error. So the preferred use is the RH, the current zoning?
Right.
You'd like it to stay the current zoning?
Yes.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yep.
Good evening, Madam President, Council Members. My name is Sam Noble. I own a small, depreciated, single-family house at 710 Southeast 26th Avenue, where I lived for nine years. The low structure value virtually guarantees that someone will tear down my house and replace it with a large, expensive house for a wealthy buyer. A similar story applies to the other houses on my block. The comp plan proposal redesignates my block as R2, but because of the small lot size, R2 won't allow any additional units on my property. Many of these houses are likely to be demolished. And I would like the city to allow replacements that support housing density that could be affordable to modest-income residents by applying an R1 designation to the entire street. This wouldn't be dramatic neighborhood-altering change because the neighboring streets already support many multi-unit buildings from duplexes on up. In fact, all but one of the surrounding blocks are designated R1 or higher. The other block is R2. I further understand that none of the structures on this block are part of the city's historic inventory. Under the comp plan proposal, only two properties actually gain allowed density, and one of these is already effectively a duplex. The proposal for this block provides an effective net increase of just one single unit. The five-unit building on the block remains non-conforming as only three units could be built on its lot under the new designation. I think that this block of Southeast 26th Avenue facing Lone First Cemetery can support the higher-density R1 designation. There's no housing on the west side of the street and no competition for parking from cemetery residents. The 15 bus line provides frequent service at 26th and Belmont, several hundred feet away. This one targeted change to the comp plan proposal is based on my knowledge of a specific street. I'm sure that there are many other areas that could also support mild increases in zoning density. I hope that you'll consider them all. Thank you very much.
Thank you. What are the cross streets on 26th that you're recommending for the R1?
Sorry, north of Morrison and south of Washington.
Thank you.
The next four, 17, 18, 19, and 20. Dave Johnston, Dixie Johnston, Glenn Stanfill, and Ann Anderson.
Welcome.
Madam President, Commissioners Fish and Novick. I'm Dave Johnston of 0550 Southwest Palatine Hill Road. I'm also Land Use Chair of the Collinsview Neighborhood Association and have been for many years. However, the association has not voted on my remarks, so they should be considered mine rather than the official position of the association. With regard to the comp plan and the map, we like the map. We urge you to adopt it as submitted, at least with respect to Collinsview. We are also concerned about the listing of the campus institutional zone and its designation as an employment area, which would allow retail services not for the campus itself but for the surrounding areas. This is in Policies 6.59 and 10.20 of the recommended plan. We suggest that Policy 10, above the entry Institutional Campus, add the heading Education and Medical Institutions as a separate heading than the employment areas and delete the words Neighborhood Serving Commercial Uses and Other Services from Policy 10.20 and 6.59. We feel this will better protect the surrounding areas from inconsistent items and we also believe that educational institutions and medical institutions should focus on education and healthcare, not providing commercial services. Thank you.
Madam President, Commissioners, I'm Dixie Johnston. I have partnered with Dave for many years and we're pretty well-known in the neighborhood. I do want to reconfirm the comments of Carol McCarthy. I didn't know what she was going to say, but that's basically my message to having to do with citizen involvement rather than community involvement for the reasons that she gives. Commissioner Fish, at the last hearing that we had on the comp plan, you and Howard Shapiro really helped my thinking on what we need to do here. And I do appreciate your comments. Howard Shapiro kept using the word citizen over and over again. And I started thinking about it, the idea of being a citizen of the community, but a citizen of the entire world. We are a growing community. We're attracting more and more immigrants. As a child, I spoke a second language better than my first language, English, because I lived out of the country. I know what it's like to be teased, laughed at, pushed down, that sort of a thing. I also remember a few years later, moving to another foreign country, having to learn yet another language and new history, new customs. So I don't want it to sound like I'm going into this political, governmental, anti-governmental rant when I'm trying to stand up for people who are new, moving here. With all the years I moved around, married career military, I've found that it takes about five years to start feeling at home in a community. And it is understandable that it takes a while for people to get used to living there. I want to thank you for considering the terminology. And yes, Commissioner Fish, you're right. We are all in this together. Thank you.
My name is Glenn Stanfill and I'm talking about a piece of property that I have at 53 fifty-three oh-eight southeast one-hundred-and-eighteenth. Oops. Talking about a piece of property that I got at fifty-three oh-eight southeast one-hundred-and-eighteenth, Portland. Right now, it's zoned at low density, multiple dwellings at R-two, and the thing is that you want to change it to single-family, R-five. And right around me, there's two acres and three-acre parcels that are zoned the same right now for high, or for medium density, at two-thousand square feet per unit. I'd like it to stay what it is right now. I've already got some drawings for a fourplex that I'd want to put on that property, but I wouldn't be able to if you changed the zoning at this particular time. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ann Anderson. I have lived in Multnomah Village since nineteen eighty-four and love the area very much. I think Portland has many special, unique areas. Multnomah Village is one of them, and I think it's important to retain the character of the village. It makes Portland, all these different, unique, different neighborhoods make Portland, I think, a unique draw for other people, which is good for the economy. I realize also that we have the urban growth boundary and we need more housing. I think there are appropriate places to do that. Barbara Boulevard, for example, along Barber, which was mentioned earlier. The Armory area, the Sears Armory, which I know is designated now for eventual development as an emergency area. However, it doesn't have to just be an emergency area. There could be housing as well, I think. I think it's important to zone the village commercial mixed-use, or CM-one, and to designate it as a neighborhood corridor. Thank you.
The next four, number twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty-three, and twenty-four. Beverly Bookin, Laura Campos, Mark Strom, and Lee Stevenson.
Good evening. I am Beverly Bookin, and I'm here today on behalf of the National College of Natural Medicine, NCNM, which wishes to have, to request, the extension of the new campus industrial, campus institutional comp plan designation to its southwest Portland campus. Some of you may not know where it's located, but it's a five-point-four acre area on the west side of the Ross Island Bridge. Currently, the campus has a patchwork of zoning designations, including high-density residential, general employment, and office commercial. Because colleges and universities are conditional uses in the RH zone, the entire campus is treated as a conditional use. Right now, the campus is regulated by a ten-year conditional use master plan, adopted in 2012, and if fully implemented, this college will have a student body of eight-hundred, three-hundred-and-ten faculty and staff, and thirty-five thousand projected outpatient visits to its on-campus clinic. The extension of the new comprehensive plan designation will make the campus eligible for legislative rezoning for one of the two campus institutional zones. And this CI comp plan designation has already been extended to fifteen colleges and medical centers with ten or more acres, but that criterion, we hear from the Bureau of Planning, is meant to be just a soft criteria. Simplifying its patchwork of zoning will allow the campus more flexibility in regulation. It can continue to develop under its current conditional use master plan until 2019, but then take advantage of new land use entitlements in the CI zones. So we would appreciate your consideration of this request.
Push the button, please. Laura, just push the button on the microphone in front of you. Thank you.
I want to follow up on what Carol McCarthy said. I'm one of those people from the seventies, and I wrote a book, and on page, it's the History of the Planning Commission, on page thirty-three, I proposed that, you know, during the seventies, we had citizen participation as kind of an antidote to some of the ills of urban renewal that we experienced during the sixties. And having come from Chicago, I certainly saw a lot of that. But the reason I'm testifying is that I'm one of the few who worked on the original, you know, the current plan, and there's a lot of fine things in it. But we did a grave injustice in north and northeast, and I've kind of lived with that guilt for thirty-five years, and it comes to me, it's very fitting that we have this testimony here at the Mittelman, which acknowledges the Holocaust and seeks to, you know, have redressed for the wrongs and to move forward in a positive way. I would like to reach closure, to feel cleansed of the stench of what went wrong in north and northeast under comp plan. I was twenty-six, now I'm sixty-two. I scarcely knew the words to describe the horror of what Mayor Goldschmidt proposed to force the current inhabitants out of the city in north and northeast. I knew it was wrong. I tried to warn people, but my misfortune was to know the outcome and not be able to prevent it. I saw it in Chicago in the sixties. One of my, I was in the foster care system, one of my foster dads was the budgeter of Chicago, and he described urban renewal as we, people go somewhere to die. And I've been working with anti-displacement folks. There's about thirty groups of people in there. I really urge you to pass some of those policies because I think it can undo some of the wrongs and get us on the right path. I don't know, maybe Audre Lorde was right. The master's tools can't be used to, what is it, the master's house. But anyway, so help me reach closure. Thank you.
Madam President, Commissioners, I'm here to request the review of the comprehensive map designation on two individual properties, of which I'm the owner.
Can you give us your name, please?
I'm sorry. My name is Mark Strom. The first property is known as the Flanders Professional Building. Its address is twenty-two fifty Northwest Flanders. It's between twenty-second and twenty-third on Flanders, abutting Williamson, Omaha Home, right across from Kitchen Caboodle. It's a twenty-three-thousand-square-foot office property that was built there in nineteen sixty-eight, so it has almost a fifty-year history of contributing to the medical community and the neighborhood. I was unaware of the map process when I was going through, so I didn't solicit any input, but I did notice it was left out of the mixed-use category and was left in the residential RH category. I think it would be logical to acknowledge its long-term use and its contribution to the northwest community as a medical asset, so that if and when this property is redeveloped, it could continue to provide some of those services to the neighborhood. It also is one of the six designated potential structured parking sites within the neighborhood as well, so I think it also could benefit from that. The fifty seconds left. The second property is one on the corner of fifty, or near Fifty-S sixth and Sandy in the Hollywood neighborhood. It is right next to the rejuvenated fire station there and behind Clyde's Prime Red. What I have there is a thirteen-thousand-square-foot lot, zoned R-one, allowing for thirteen units, and all of those units are in the north fifty feet of that property, leaving a seventy-by-one-hundred-foot area there that I mow and have for twenty-eight years, always waiting for an opportunity out in the future for planning to accept some higher designation. There is some logic to extending the mixed-use line along from Clyde's over to Fifty-S sixth and picking up my property and the fire station so that it would allow me to add some residential units onto that site.
Can you give me the address of that site, please?
Twenty-five thirty-seven northeast Fifty-S sixth. And if I might just add, I did go to the neighborhood bodies in both areas and received approval from both of them before coming to see you.
Thank you. That's important. What's the, what are you, which designation are you requesting on the one on Sandy?
I think any higher-density residential use would be acceptable to me because that's my intent, but logic would say that it would be a mixed-use zone for consistency of the map. Otherwise, I'm told it would be spot zoning to move it to RH.
So either of them would be all right with you?
Either of them would be all right with me.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next four are twenty-five, twenty-six, and twenty-seven, twenty-eight. Jim Gardner, Stephen Bedrick, Lawrence Margolin, and Jackie Berger.
I don't know who's first, but just go right ahead. Go first, about me.
I'm the land use, my name is Jim Gardner. I'm the land use chair for the South Portland Neighborhood Association. Our association supports the centers and corridors approach as a very appropriate conceptual tool for planning. However, we believe that the Planning and Sustainability Commission was a bit overzealous in how they applied those designations in some parts of our neighborhood. We therefore request that you make the following changes to the recommended draft before final adoption. In Lair Hill, SPNA requests that the central strip along First Avenue be designated as a neighborhood corridor rather than a civic corridor. This strip is zoned CN now and is proposed to change to the new mixed-use CM-one. It is an island, a few blocks of commercial zoning, much of it still residential in actual use. The south end of First Avenue dead-ends at NATO and thus has no through-traffic. In no sense is this a corridor with any citywide or even area-wide functions. The significant difference between neighborhood corridor and civic corridor is that civic corridor allows additional height and FAR bonuses. This area is within the South Portland National Historic District, and it is subject to design guidelines which are even more restrictive than the base zone. The civic corridor designation would simply create confusion and raise false expectations about the level of possible development. Along McAdam Avenue, SPNA requests that all of the commercial area be designated a civic corridor rather than an urban center. McAdam Avenue has no center. It does not function as any kind of focus for the neighborhood. It is a linear, heavily-used commuting corridor and commercial strip bounded on both sides by residences. Either of these designations would allow McAdam a more intense level of commercial development than the current zoning, but the urban center's more permissive exceptions and bonuses would allow unsustainably denser commercial development, already worsening McAdam's congestion already. A major transit facility improvement, such as the streetcar to Selwood Bridge, would be necessary before McAdam could support that level of development. And lastly, in Lair Hill, SPNA requests that the YMCA site, currently zoned CN, be changed to mixed-use CM-one instead of CM-two. Everywhere else in southwest and in the city, the CN zone is being converted to CM-one. Jumping an extra step to CM-two allows higher building heights and more square footage than CM-one. This site is going to become Under Armour's new corporate northwest headquarters, and they've said they may eventually want to add an extra floor.
Thank you, Jim.
But the impacts of this should be evaluated under a site-specific process and not slipped in as part of a citywide comp plan update.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, and thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is Stephen Bedrick, and I'm assistant professor at OHSU, and I also live just down the road from here, next to Gabriel Park. And I'm a thirty-four-year Portland native. In fact, I was born and lived the first few years of my life in Multnomah Village, and we've already heard a lot about Multnomah Village, so I'm not going to reiterate too much, although I just want to second all of that. What I would like to point out is that the existing zoning of Multnomah Village is storefront commercial, and looking at the definition for that, it talks a lot about preserving and enhancing older commercial areas that already have a storefront character. And it seems to me that that's doing a good job with the village as it is. Growth and, I mean, density and redevelopment are not ends in and of themselves, right? They're means to an end, and that end is a flourishing, walkable, enjoyable, streetscape neighborhood, which the village already has. We've heard a lot about how it's already maybe at capacity for traffic, and certainly adding four-to-five-story buildings would not do it any favors in terms of light or walkability or accessibility. So I really think that rezoning it to CM-two would be very inappropriate for the area and would cause a lot of damage. And one thing that hasn't yet come up, people talk about the parking concern, which is very real, it's not my main concern, but along the lines of parking, the neighborhood side streets are already shouldering quite a lot of burden for the existing residential and commercial use of the village. You may or may not be aware that many of those streets are officially unmaintained by the city. A lot of them are actually in quite a large state of disrepair. They're very narrow. Many of them are not paved. Adding a lot of additional use to that will not help anything, and the geography and geology of the area make it very hard to widen many of these streets. So it's kind of a very tight little area that's working very well as it is, and I would just propose that we not rezone it. Yes, thank you.
My name is Lawrence Margolin. The site address and my address is one-one-three-nine Southwest Gibbs Street, just up the hill from OHSU. I'm a Markham Hill property owner, and I'm here to discuss the CM-one zoning area proposed just west of OHSU and up the hill. I support that CM-one mixed-use zoning, and in fact feel it should be extended further up southwest Gibbs Street where we can get more services up on the hill. There's a significant lack of services and quality housing up on the OHSU hill for students and employees of OHSU, where three thousand new students arrive each year and need modern, affordable housing on the hill. The apartments built on the hill were constructed in the forties and fifties. Many of the nineteen thirties single-family homes have been converted to multiple rental units, and the demand for housing and commercial services up above OHSU is quite high. Currently, there's only a plaid pantry and a Thai food cart up there in the CS-zoned area. So I'm requesting that the CM-one zoning in the comp plan be extended one block west up the hill on Gibbs Street to include my property at one-one-three-nine Southwest Gibbs. I've owned this home since nineteen ninety-eight, and I'm currently undergoing a developmental feasibility study with an architect to determine the next best use for this property. With this CM-one zoning would give us more options and ideas for development. The street up there does not have sidewalks, the stormwater, it doesn't have stormwater drainage, so all this would be included in our project. There are many pedestrians walking up and down the street all day long, and the site is within a hundred feet of the frequent service Trimate number eight bus stop. So again, the site is ready for development and could begin shortly. I have spoken to the Homestead Neighborhood Association and received support for development on the site. Yeah.
Okay. Was there a Jackie, is it a Berger or a Barger on Thirty-second? Okay, we'll go with twenty-nine, thirty, thirty-one, and thirty-two. Mike Connors, Marnie Susick, Brian Campbell, and Ty Wynne.
My name is Mike Connors, and I'm here on behalf of Polisca Investments, LLC and Space Age Fuel, Inc. My clients own and operate several service stations, convenience stores, vehicle repair facilities around the city of Portland. Four of them are proposed to be redesignated with mixed-use designations as part of the comp plan amendment. We're here to predominantly request that the city council postpone adoption of the comprehensive plan amendments until you have the mixed-use zoning project amendments before you. And my client's situation is a poster child for why we believe that you need to consider those concurrently. My clients don't have any objection to any of the specific or general policies or the comp plan designations for their property, but the devil's in the details, and those details are in the mixed-use zoning project amendments, which are not even currently before the Planning and Sustainability Commission. Part of those amendments, based on the draft that we reviewed, is proposing certain mixed-use zoning for my clients' properties that would prohibit or significantly restrict the very uses that they're using those properties for now: service stations, vehicle repair, et cetera. And so the concern that we have is, we're not objecting to the comp plan designation, but we do have serious concerns about the mixed-use zones. And we're concerned that you adopt the designations and then And we're concerned that you adopt the designations, and then we come before you during the mixed-use zoning amendments, and you're somehow restricted because those designations have already been adopted. This is an issue that we have repeated in the Planning and Sustainability Commission level, as well as other parties. I'm a little bit surprised there aren't more parties that are continuing to echo that during this process, but I would urge you to do that. Those two are interrelated. You can't disconnect them, and I have yet to hear a compelling reason why they shouldn't be considered concurrently. Thank you for your time.
Madam President and Commissioners, I agree with him. I think they ought to be concurrent, that we're in for a lot of trouble otherwise. I live in Multnomah, and I agree with most of the yellow shirts, all of the yellow shirts, actually, and other people.
Just put your name into the record, please.
Pardon me?
Just put your name into the record.
Oh, Marty Suchek, sorry. I won't repeat those. There are some things that do concern me that aren't in the plan, at least I can't find them, things that are hard to find at times. One of the things that is in the plan is the statement that the density is going to be focused on downtown and these mixed-use corridors and centers, and the neighborhoods won't be touched. Well, that's not really true. They're not going to be actively touched, but passively, our neighborhoods are disappearing. I would like to see some kind of incentive to sustain older houses that are well-built, you know, that have old-growth forests. Some incentive, I don't know how you do it, I'm not a planner, and I would like planners to figure out how. You create those incentives to make them more energy-efficient, to allow the yards and habitats to remain. It's really difficult to see good, old houses demolished, the trees demolished, the habitat demolished. And if they were being replaced by, you know, not a full footprint on the property, that would be something else. But these things are going up, and they're going all over, and that's, you know, that doesn't maintain the characters. Then I'd like to see some incentive for smaller houses, and maybe clusters of cottages and bungalows. You say in the plan that 60% or, I think it's that number, of the population is going to be old people, and I'm one of those people, and I can't afford to live in the studio apartments either that are growing up, and I want a garden, both to grow my own food and to offer habitat, which will protect the farmlands that the urban growth boundary is meant to protect, too. It'll make, you know, we need the pollinators. Thank you very much.
Good evening. I'm Brian Campbell. I'm a resident of the Westmoreland area of Portland. I'm also a planner that has been active in Oregon for 38 years, a fellow of the American Institute of Certified Planners and a member of both national and Oregon boards, the American Planning Association. But I'm here testifying this evening as a citizen of Portland about the importance of well-located and designed density in achieving city goals. So from a planning perspective, Portland has been a unique, on a unique path of US cities for the last 40-plus years. We recognized early on that suburbanization of cities was an unhealthy, unsustainable trend, and the only practical alternative, if we were going to grow, was to develop more intensely and with greater transportation choices and a reduced reliance on the automobile, which became so ubiquitous in post-war America. And in following this policy throughout the years, we've created a vibrant, thriving inner area of the city. In doing so, we intentionally went back to what's worked so well in all of human history before the 20th century, which was to build our cities around people and their basic needs, not around a single mode of transportation. It's clear that this vibrancy is not uniformly experienced across the city, but has been focused on downtown and many inner neighborhoods, but not in East Portland and at some other areas. There are significant challenges in determining how to extend this success to the rest of the city. We need strong policies and implementation actions to address our affordability and inclusiveness issues to make sure that all Portlanders benefit from the city's overall prosperity. But it's also clear that to be successful in this, we cannot back away from our principal urban form policy, providing more intensely-developed centers and corridors in strategic areas throughout the city. More density is the only way to accommodate more affordable housing and transportation choices, though it may take different forms in different neighborhoods, the development of intense mixed-use pedestrian-friendly corridors, centers with good transit service while preserving most of the nearby single-family housing. It's absolutely essential to the creation of a healthy, vibrant Portland for all. Sorry.
Thank you so much for your time and attention this evening. My name is Ty Weinem, and I'm here tonight as attorney for Dr. Nata Razuli. I gave your assistant a, oh, excellent, it made its way to you. And that aerial depicts Dr. Razuli's property located at 6141 Southwest Canyon Court. I submitted, I'm testifying tonight really in support of a letter dated November 9th, which described a bit fully the process at the Planning and Sustainability Commission and our response, and by response, I mean response with expert reports from a traffic engineer, a soil scientist, and someone special, engineer specializing in storm drainage, that the site is fully developable at the R2 zone. That is what Dr. Razuli requested. My take on this, when he came to me after the planning and sustainability process was, well, I don't, you know, I'm not sure of R2, but I'm pretty sure that R20 is not appropriate. If you simply look at the property, as I said, it's quite developable, and it is immediately adjacent to the Sunset, as you can see. For a little bit of orientation, this location is just west of the Sylvan Interchange, actually, and it's quite close to the westerly boundary of the city. Dr. Razuli is of our community. He has practiced dentistry in the Sylvan area for many, many years, lives now with his wife and their two young children in the city, also in the Sylvan area. I know I'm not supposed to, Commissioner Fritz, but really do express appreciation, not just to you, but to your staff, for their responsiveness, and we would just be happy to engage, particularly engage the experts that we have retained to address, to address any issues that would pertain to upzoning the site.
The next four are 33, 34, 41, and 42. Joe Esmond, Sheila Fink, Jim Carlock, and Ayesha Lorenz Al Said.
Do you want to read the next?
How about Jan Wilson?
Please go ahead. Want to start?
In any order. I'm Sheila Greenlaw Fink, and have lived in the southwest neighborhoods for about 20 years, in Garden Home and here in Hillsdale more recently. And you said you'd get grumpy if we repeat prior testimony, and I know you've had a lot of testimony on anti-displacement provisions. I just want to take this opportunity to ask you to just say yes to keep the 28 or so provisions that you put in and to thank you for the public involvement, anti-displacement, and affordable housing work that's been done on this comp plan. I think that neighborhoods have a great opportunity to learn during the process and then to follow through with you as it unfolds, in the sense that every time a project comes before a neighborhood association, there's a robust discussion. And I think the best thing we all can do is familiarize ourselves in advance. Last night, the Hillsdale neighborhoods spent about 45 minutes talking about how density could be incorporated in a way that didn't see us losing those things we love about the neighborhood. And with Eli Spivak, it was a great discussion. I know you've done a lot of work on accessory dwelling, infill units, a lot of options. It isn't all about towering complexes on Barber, though those are important and will help. Also, want to thank you for getting some people indoors at the Armory. Even if we didn't get permanent housing there, it's good to see people being inside at night, so thank you. And just say yes.
Thank you. My name is Jim Carlock. I live in northeast Portland, and I've got a question for every member of the City Council. Why are you ignoring the wishes of the people? Why are you ignoring the fact that we voted against increasing density in our neighborhoods? Twice. Once in 2002, it came out two to one against increasing density in our neighborhoods. And the second one was last November, like, a year ago, November. That time, Multnomah County voted three to one against increasing density in our neighborhoods. Yet the comp plan is full of more density. Why are you ignoring us? The issue came up earlier about why, about, somebody said, "I wouldn't want you to think I'm a government hater." But that's exactly what you're laying the foundation for. This kind of stuff just increases the cynicism of people. I mean, it's obvious that you don't care. Now let's move on to affordability. You also claim to care about affordability, but your policies are carefully designed to destroy affordability. Let me read you what Jason Furman, Chairman of the White House Council of Economic Advisers, said in a recent speech. It was covered, I believe, in the Wall Street Journal. "Restricted supply leads to higher prices and less affordability. We see the association in the relationship between land use regulations, comp plan, of how many hundred pages of restrictions, and affordability in several dozen US metro areas." Then he goes on to say, "They can hit the poorest Americans the hardest. You wonder why we're having displacement? That's why." And admittedly, this is, that part of the problem is primarily a metro problem, where they've decided we're going to increase density, and contrary to what the planners would tell you, increasing density is almost always related to higher housing cost. If you actually cared about affordability, you would pressure Metro to get rid of their tight urban growth boundary. The decision to build up instead of out is destroying Portland's livability.
Thanks, Mr. Frum.
Unless you're calling Los Angeles a density livable.
Thank you.
Or maybe Calcutta or Hong Kong.
Thank you.
Hong Kong has a 16 to 1 ratio of housing cost to people's income. That is what high density gets you.
Mr. Carlock, I need you to stop now, please. Thank you. Push the button, please. There's a button at the bottom. Thank you.
Thank you for this forum. I'm Ayesha Lorenz Al Said, and I'm here to discuss and give a statement about our property at the end of Patton Road at 5920. My grandfather, Max Lorenz of Lorenz Brothers Construction, perched a stit from Shaver Transportation about 70 years ago as a rental income property. At that time, it was approximately five acres. In the 1970s, my father sold half of it, leaving the remainder as one parcel. At one time, I agreed with the rest of my family that it would ruin the natural environment to develop it. However, every year I see that there are more people requiring housing in Portland. Prayer led me to reconsider more density of development. Instead of one home and adding a few more, it could actually be possible to build five or even six additional homes besides renewing the original. If we make good use of the good concrete foundations of several original outbuildings already on the property, which are slightly on the edge of the environmental zone, instead of tearing out what is actually more invasive and environmentally destructive. I would like to clarify that we've never experienced erosion or landslides on our property. Water runoff goes down to the creek, and we use natural methods of pulling non-native ivy and mechanically pushing the blackberries. I'm interested in maintaining as much as possible the natural vegetations without digging, except for the homes, new homes basements, which I think is important in this damp area, for stability of the earth as much as possible and to support the ecosystems and the creatures that make up that. Our land is a haven for raccoons, moles, squirrels, cats, dogs, rabbits, frogs, and birds. These are creatures that naturally like to roam and are intrinsic part of the truly natural environment. Oftentimes, the natural creatures are ignored in developments, especially semi-rural, and have not been provided for. And I would like to pioneer this in my planned unit development with perhaps a treehouse or two and some nesting boxes up high. The name of my project, or PUD, would be Lorenz Peace of Patton, with "peace" spelt as P-E-A-C-E, which is what we need to be mindful of to cultivate within ourselves and the environment in which we live. For that, I would need a request to maintain the R10 designation instead of changing it to an R20. I would like to touch also the last fourth of my talk about another subject dear to my heart.
Unfortunately, your time is up, but if you'd like to give us your testimony in writing, that would be great. Thank you. But let me just check to make sure I've got that right. 5920 southwest Patton, and you wanted to say R10, not R20.
Right.
Thank you.
The last two who signed up, 43 and 44, are Jan Wilson and Mary Ann Fitzgerald.
If anybody else wants to testify, please come and sign up with the council clerk.
Good evening. I'm Jan Wilson, and I'm here representing the Bridle Mile Neighborhood Association, and I will submit written comments, so I'm going to just touch on the main point of that. And that is that we are asking for the designation of Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway to be changed from what it's proposed. It's currently proposed as a civic corridor, and we're asking for it to be proposed as a neighborhood corridor. The distinction is different, as you have heard, with the same, we have the same situation as South Portland neighborhood, and that is, the corridor is already developed in as it can be, in a very neighborhood-oriented way. The commercial business is there, the homes there, all tied into neighborhood. It's not a civic through corridor. Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway is not the intensity of Sandy or Barber Boulevard. It's just not. And it can't be, and this is the most important thing, even if you said, "Well, the comp plan is what the vision for the future should be," it can't be that intense, and that's because it runs along Fan-O Creek. All the development that's along Beaverton-Hillsdale Highway right now on the north side is practically falling into Fan-O Creek. Many of the apartment buildings have their foundations eroded because Fan-O Creek runs right under them, and then it crosses the, it crosses under the street. So there's no way that you could build something like a Costco or, I mean, the Albertsons and the Safeway that are there, that's all that can be built, and you can't build seven multi-story or five-story mixed-use development. So there are other reasons, and we've gone through all the definitions in the comp plan, and there's nothing that fits Beaverton-Hillsdale being a civic corridor. So we're asking you to properly designate it as a neighborhood corridor. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mary Ann Fitzgerald, and I'm representing Southwest Neighborhoods tonight. Sweeney submitted written comments today, so these were more than a dozen specific comments from our Land Use Committee, our Transportation Committee, and our Parks Committee. We threaded those three sets of comments into one letter. Since I serve as the Vice Chair of the Transportation Committee, I'm just going to highlight that because I know them the best. I watched the City Council work session on the Transportation Systems Plan, and I really applaud Mayor Hale's focus on performance measures and really focusing on outcomes. But I also serve on the Bureau committees, and I see how tangled they are. And so after watching the work session, I tried to get the data on the pretty maps, and it's very difficult to obtain the data. So I'm asking that the, Sweeney is requesting that the Transportation Systems Plan establish a clear link between the transportation project evaluation criteria and the performance measures, and establish a baseline and goals and allow the public to access the data so we can see it. Too often, like, there's some criteria that are indexes, and it's just too challenging. So the second comment also has to do with centers and corridors, but it's a little different twist on it. We know that the plan focuses on future growth, but over the last 25 years, we have seen a lot of growth with no infrastructure, no sidewalks, no bike paths, no stormwater systems, and so we have a lot of gaps, not only in southwest Portland, but throughout the city. So we're requesting two things, that all the bureaus conduct a study of when you adopt these centers and corridors, look at the infrastructure and see, is it sufficient to accommodate growth? You know, right now, all we're getting is cars. We need to have the infrastructure so people can walk and take the bus and take their bicycles or whatever to get around and manage stormwater properly, and then identify where those gaps are and put them in the next iteration of the Transportation Systems Plan. And the second thing is that when the new developments are built, to require that they build the infrastructure. The waivers of remonstrance have created these gaps, and too often, the bike lanes are left on the cutting floor, the sidewalks. So if we really are committed to accommodating growth, we really have to give citizens the tools that we need to help the city meet goals. Thank you.
Hi, Doug Klotz. I want to second everything Mary Ann Fitzgerald said about the waivers and the lack of getting sidewalks with development. It's been a long... It's been a long, a large problem for a long time. Sorry, I'm not, I didn't want to double dip unless we had time. I realize I testified before. I just wanted to give you a minute about southeast corridors between 37th and 38th. I have a, what I think, hopes a clear map on the second page of the areas which have been comp plan designated mixed-use or commercial since at least 1991. And this is, this is a way to develop the commercial node at Division and Chavez, you know, in a logical manner. There's already commercial lots back on corridors that are being used as commercial, and this would be about the least impactful way to allow more development at that node of commercial development. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to testify?
Rod Merrick signed up.
And then it looks like we will have time for those six photographs, if you're still wanting to show those.
It appears I came just in time. I'm Rod Merrick. Do I need to tell my address, et cetera? No, okay. I'm representing the Eastmoreland Neighborhood Association, and undoubtedly, you've had correspondents from us on a number of subjects on the comprehensive plan. And I want to call your attention to that, but I particularly want to focus this evening on two areas of the plan that I think need to be addressed. Eastmoreland applied to have its zoning changed from R5 to R7. We believe that our position was not well-represented, partly because of the very confusing language in the code. By every criteria, our neighborhood fits the R7 category as it's currently defined. And we're, again, asking council to take a look at this issue very carefully. We'd be happy to meet with you to go over the details, but we've also submitted a lot of evidence, and I'll be submitting an additional piece of evidence this evening. The other thing I want to highlight is the, is the, something that others have brought up, which is that, for whatever reason, the single-family dwelling code is included in the comprehensive plan. And this is a very specific language in an aspirational document, and I, along with others, feels that this should be removed. It is entirely inappropriate to be bringing that language forward. Any questions?
Thank you very much. So you wanted to show us some photographs?
Yes, if we could have the first slide, please. These are six photographs I took up on Mississippi Avenue right before it takes a bend in the road and becomes albina. And as a takeaway tonight, I want to share these six photographs. And if we could have the next slide, please? And ask yourself the question, would you be happy living in and/or owning a bungalow in one of these situations? Next slide, please. The residents of this apartment building will look, it's under construction, will look directly into the backyard. Can I have the next slide, please? That is a view down into the neighbor's backyard. Next slide, please. Here's another slide of a four-story building, Mississippi Avenue, with a bungalow situated right next door, same situation. All the apartments will look, would look down, directly down in the backyard and on their house. Are there more slides? Ah, one more. Same situation, four-floor, four-story apartment building under construction, Mississippi Avenue, single-family bungalow in the foreground. So you have to be honest with yourself. I'd like you to be honest with yourself and say, is this appropriate? It's a question that you have to answer yourself. Thank you.
Does anybody else want to testify? Well, thank you very much for the very high quality of testimony tonight. Thank you also to Portland Community Media, both for that slideshow and for covering this entire show, which goes out on Channel 30, live and also on recording. And thanks to our Planning Bureau staff, and most of all, thank you to the Jewish, Middleman Jewish Community Center for hosting us here tonight. As I mentioned, so this hearing is continued till next week, December 10th, at 6 o'clock at Parkhurst High School. And if you've already testified, it's not necessary to testify again. If you have other issues to bring up, or if you'd just like to come and listen, which I really appreciate everybody who came to listen tonight and didn't necessarily want to testify, this has been a really good process, and I think together, we're going to be able to work towards a really great comprehensive plan. Thank you very much. Good night.